Started. Welcome, everybody, to the May 27th School Committee Meeting. We have lots of guests tonight. We're excited to get started. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the liberty of the United States of America.
And to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That was probably worse than you knew.
Trying to figure that out. All right. We will start with approval of items by consensus. Approval of minutes, May 13th, 2020. Is there a motion? Thank you, Mrs. Burns, seconded by Mr. Bjork. All in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you. We have approval of Wilmington Educational Foundation Technology Grants in the amount of $4,768.42. And I will quickly read the recipients. We have Larissa Weeks, a grade-one teacher, for Turning Point Teacher Classroom Clicker-Ir Response Card System. We have Amy Iascony, grade-five teacher, for an subscription for ELA-IXL. We have Leah Lebof, speech-language pathologist, for an iPad, a case, an iTunes gift card for the apps. Heather Peachey and Michelle Kirchen, librarians, for 15 lightbox books. We have Michelle Leveque, grade-four teacher at the West, for ISL subscription for ELA and math. Kim Provençal for Echo Third Generation Smart Speaker with Alexa, protection plan and charging base. Suzanne Crowe for Everyday Speech Membership Renewal and Five Apps. And Roxanne Rini, music teacher at Shawshene, for two iPads, Apple gift card for apps, two iPad cases, six headphone slitters, and six headphones. So thank you again to WEF for their very generous grants and to the teachers for applying and receiving those grants. Would someone like to read the recommended motion? Mrs. Burns?
Let me scroll up. I would move to accept Wilmington Educational Foundation's 2020 Technology Grants in the amount of $4,768.42.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Samaha. All in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you, everybody. All right. Next, we have some warrants: G422, R228, 229, 230, 231, FS32, 33, 34, 35, and 36. Is there a motion? Mr. Fenley, thank you, seconded by Mrs. Newhouse. All in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you. We have payroll ending 5/20/2020. Is there a motion? Thank you, Mrs. Burns, seconded by Mr. Radsdale. All in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you. And finally, we have CB11. Is there a motion? Thank you, Mr. Fenley, seconded by Mr. Samaha. All in favor? That is two abstentions. Mrs. Dixie, do you have that? I'm going to say yes, but I have it if you don't. All right. Moving right along, we have our recognition of Wilmington Middle School and our Wilmington High School Student Representatives. We will name them, and then I think we have some people here to say a couple of things about them. Is that my right, Mr. Robinson? I see you nodding. Thank you. So we'll actually start with our middle school representatives. We were so lucky to have four representatives this year, and this was actually our first time through. So congratulations to you for serving your class well and actually being the first group of middle school reps that the school committee has seen. And I think they did a fabulous job, but I'll leave that up to Mr. Robinson. We have honoring night and recognizing Lindsey Anthony, grade-eight, Wilmington Middle School. Abigail Driscoll, grade-eight, Wilmington Middle School. Molly McDonald, grade-eight, Wilmington Middle School. And Carly Thayer, grade-eight, Wilmington Middle School. So I'll pass it on to you and Mr. Robinson.
So thank you, guys, for having us all throughout the year. It was an awesome experience for the girls and kind of cool for me to kind of be there to support them and to kind of see them as they kind of grow into the leaders that I knew that they would be. Important to know that these girls were peer-selected through our Student Council election process. They represent all three houses in the middle school, and they really are model members of our WMS community, and they really do embody our core values. In addition to being president of the Student Council, Lindsey participates in SAD. She is part of the Best Buddies Group. She even worked to tutor sixth-grade math while she couldn't participate in gym this year. And she also works in different sports. She plays basketball, plays soccer, and also referees youth soccer and volunteers at the MSPCA in what I assume is her limited free time because she does so much. I would say overall, Lindsey really is just reliable and easygoing. Whenever anything came up and there was a situation where I needed a kid in, you know, super short notice, I could always count on Lindsey to be there. So special shout-out to her for being that for us. Abby Driscoll. So she is the vice president of the Wilmington Middle School Student Council. She is an athlete as well. She participates in lacrosse, basketball, and soccer. She, like I said, is the vice president of the Student Council. She is in the SAD group as well and also works with the Best Buddies Group. Overall, you know, Abby is just friendly and always eager to help out. She's a kid that would always come to see me in the morning, and that's been one of the biggest things that I've missed. It's kind of getting to shoe her onto her house because she should have been there, but always kind of saying good morning to me was just a nice treat. So definitely missed that, and thank you, Abby, for all your work. Carly. So Carly is the secretary of the Middle School Student Council. She's been playing the ukulele. She participates in horseback riding. She plays soccer, participates in Beyond Tops. And overall, I would say that Carly is just really caring and thoughtful. She's someone that would always greet me in the morning and say goodbye to me on the way out. Just a really, you know, caring individual that cared about both her teachers and her peers, too. So she was a great addition to our team. And last but not least is Molly. So Molly is the treasurer of the Middle School Student Council. She plays the violin. She plays town and club soccer, and she also is on the town basketball team. And she also works in the Girl Scouts. And Molly is just really kind-hearted and a really hard worker. No matter what we were doing, Molly would always put 100% effort into it, whether it was our meetings to prepare for Student Council or any of the events that the Student Council ran and coming to School Committee. You know, she was somebody that always went the extra mile, so I really appreciate that, Molly. Thank you.
That's wonderful. Thank you so much. Thank you, eighth graders. We are really deeply appreciative of all your time and efforts this year and to Mr. Robinson for being their fearless leader. I know that you put in a ton of extra hours and time, and I know all the students, not just the students, not just the leaders here, but all of the students really do appreciate you and parents. So thank you so much for all of that. We appreciate it. Next, we would like to say a thank you and to honor our high school representative, Angelin Champa, grade 10. Thank you. Thank you for being here and also for being such a wonderful role model to our eighth-grade representatives and showing them how it is done and for being so present at our meetings. We are deeply appreciative. And I think Ms. Peters is going to say a few words about you.
Well, I think you probably all know that Angelin is an extraordinary young lady. She's articulate, intelligent, dedicated, and most of all, she's kind. I think that the most important fact that I can share about Angelin is that she cares. She puts her heart and soul not only into her own success, but into our success, the success of Wilmington High School. She's awesome, and I look forward to working with her next year. Thank you, Angelin.
Thank you very much to our representatives. I don't know if any other members of the school committee would like to say anything? Okay. So I'm still navigating this. Oh, Mr. Radsdale, thank you.
I just quickly want to add that people who, you know, watch them on the, you know, perform in the meetings and watch them on WCTV probably looks easy to speak in front of the entire school committee and in front of the cameras and so forth, and it's definitely not. And to learn to do that with the poise that these young women do is something that we can be very proud of.
Absolutely.
It's not as easy as it looks.
No, that is for sure. We hope that, oh, Mr. Bjork, sorry. Go ahead. You have to unmute, though.
Do I have to do that?
Yes. You're still muted.
Apparently, I'm not meant to speak.
There you are.
Just want to echo Mr. Radsdale's comments and your own and just tell all of the students how fortunate we were to have them representing our schools. Thank you. Thank you to everybody very, very much.
Thank you for your, oh, Mr. Samaha?
Yeah, I'll just add in a thank you to, especially to the middle school. At least three of those girls I know well outside of this. So it's great to see them, you know, in all of these different roles. I just thank you. Thank you all for bearing with us in our, some of our longer meetings and stuff. So just big, big, big thank you.
Thank you. We look forward to seeing all that you accomplish next year. I know the eighth graders are moving off to high school, and Angelin, you will be moving to 11th grade. And so we hope that we have a chance to see you next year as well. Who knows? Maybe you'll get drafted once again. I don't know. I don't know how that works, Ms. Peters. All right. Thank you. Thank you so much. Have a wonderful rest of the school year and a fantastic summer, and we really are appreciative. All right. Next, we have, and you're more than welcome to stay. Oh, they're already gone. No, I'm kidding. That was fast. I didn't even have to do my, "You're more than welcome to stay, but you can go if you'd like." Next, we have our superintendent's report. Dr. Brand.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you. And that is unfortunate that they took off so quickly. I get it. I don't blame them. I definitely want to talk to Carly about her background. Those lights, those lights are on the top of her ceiling. I need an update on my backdrop. I will just, though, thank you for your positive comments. And, you know, obviously, there are so many aspects that are very unfortunate about this time period that we are making our way through, not the least of which is the opportunity that we did not have to hear from our students throughout the course of our last few months. The intention is to certainly continue, including our middle school students. I think that they provide a great perspective as well, in addition to our high school students going forward. And so whatever form that we might be in next year, please know that it would be my hope and my intent to have that continue. There are three specific items under the superintendent's report this evening that I wanted to take the pleasure to update you as well as the community on. First off, our new assistant superintendent for curriculum and staff development. Christine Elliott is with us somewhere in the mix of the many folks on this call. And before turning it over to her, just say hello to you. I want to take this opportunity, this information, as you know, has gone out to our community, but it's with great pleasure that I have the chance to formally introduce you to her as the successor for Dr. Regan as he prepares to leave the district at the end of this year. Ms. Elliott has over 25 years of public education experience, having served as a teacher and educational leader all at the elementary level. She, although beginning her career in New Hampshire, really has spent the majority of her time not too far up the road in the Tri-Town District, where she has served a multitude of roles, including reading specialist, English Language Arts and Social Studies Instructional Support Specialist. And through that work, she is overseeing instructional coaches. She's supported building principals as well as teachers. Highlights of other facets of her work over the time period in Tri-Town has included the oversight of the induction and mentoring program, training evaluators and educators in the evaluation model, and also leading the implementation of standards-based report card. The district received over 40 applications for Dr. Regan's position. The search committee invited 11 candidates for initial interviews before advancing four semifinalists to further consider as our next assistant superintendent, including, of course, Ms. Elliott. The search process included virtual site visits to Wilmington, as you know, where we had the good fortune of getting to know her better and Christine the opportunity to get to know us as well, too, through the process. And that included, just as if we were in session, the opportunity to meet with the staff, district leaders, as well as members of the community. Feedback gathered throughout the process identified Ms. Elliott as an educational leader who believes in the importance of leading by example and never hesitant to help guide all parts related to curriculum and instruction or work. Her colleagues described her as someone who is able to develop both a long-term, big-picture vision while also keenly able to balance the need of attending to the finer details, essential in developing and implementing a plan. She continuously seeks to inform her decision-making based upon data and feedback and ultimately is committed to making decisions that are in the best interest of students with equity and advancement as a point of service. So it's my pleasure to be able to introduce you to you and welcome to the Wilmington community, Ms. Elliott. With that, Ms. Elliott, if you'd like to say hello.
Sure. Thank you so much. So I just wanted to say thank you that, you know, for that introduction. I am really thrilled to be here, and I'm really excited to begin my transition formally on July 1st. But I've already begun doing some, you know, connecting with folks in central office, beginning the onboarding process. And everybody I've connected with so far has been so welcoming and helpful and supportive, so I'm really excited about that. Tomorrow, I actually get to set foot in the Roman House for the first time, which I'm looking forward to. Very, I think, atypical to be hired for a position and never have set foot on the property. I did drive around all the campus, all the different campuses, but I've never actually set foot. So I'm really looking forward to that opportunity to connect tomorrow with Dr. Regan, who is going to start transferring files and information to me and begin that process. I look forward to developing a more formal entry plan when I meet with Dr. Brand in the near future and start that process as well. But for the most part, I would just really like to thank everyone involved in the search process. It was definitely, I think, a unique experience that most districts have not encountered, and Wilmington, I think, did an amazing job making the process happen seamlessly. So that was very impressive. But more importantly, it was so helpful to me to see how invested all stakeholder members were in this process. And it gave me the snapshot picture of Wilmington that I needed to see to decide if this was the right fit for me. So I was so appreciative, and so it was so helpful to me. And I am so appreciative of everyone involved in that process because I, you know, I had the opportunity to meet with virtually so many different people and get perspectives from so many. So thank you to everyone involved in that process. And I am excited and look forward to launching into learning more about the Wilmington Public Schools way. So thank you all.
Welcome to the district. Look forward to working with you as well.
Yeah, good to say welcome as well, and thank you for bringing the coolest bookcase to the district.
Sure. I don't think I could ever fit it in the office because it's not real, but.
Good welcome.
Thank you.
All right. Well, with that, thank you, Christine, for being here this evening, and I hope to see you perhaps as well tomorrow at the Roman House. It'll be a challenge to keep our social distance.
Yes.
Just to clarify, the Roman House is the building in front of that large brick building that we'll see, which is the high school. But it's with great pleasure that we welcome you to Wilmington. Thank you again. The second item for the superintendent's report this evening is a little bit different than I'm going to. In just a moment, turn it over to our principals, who have, and Tristan, who will share a brief presentation with you. You know, there are so many folks who are, as you know, working, who have been working so very hard behind the scenes as well as obviously front and center with our families throughout these last two months, and certainly not the least of which is our principals, who have as well stepped up, worked so closely and collaboratively with our leadership team, but more importantly, with our families and our students in this time of need, attending to a multitude of issues that never before March 12th would have been envisioned. So I take this opportunity to thank them for their commitment and their collaboration and their hard work on behalf of families, much of which is left unseen and behind the scenes. They have done an outstanding job in serving the Wilmington community, even in these trying times. The purpose of inviting them here tonight, though, is really to take a couple of moments and provide an update to the school committee and to the community at some of the highlights that stand out for their work as school communities to date and just briefly, some of the things that they're thinking about that span the next couple of weeks. Obviously, with everything being up in the air and suspended in terms of a state of normalcy, this requires a different framework, different thinking around how to go about such things as transition planning, closing up school, but also at the same time preparing for the opening of school, whatever that will look like. And so I'm going to turn it over to them now. I think Tristan is going to share the slide pack with you. I'm not sure who might start, but you know that we have them all here tonight and thank them for their time tonight. I'm not sure who is going to go.
Hi, Glenn. I think I'm actually going to go through the slideshow for everybody, and then if anybody has any questions at the end, we all sort of made this together. And although you're going to see a variety of things, this is just a small clip of all the things we've done or have been doing. So you may see something highlighted in one school, but that doesn't mean the other school's not doing it. It's just that we tried to highlight different things so you could see a variety. So Tristan, so this is the first slide, just a couple of things that I think that to sort of, to highlight some of the things that, as a district, we're doing. We've been doing things as staff members still, working together. And you all know about the amazing lunches and program that have been running. Tristan, you can go to the next slide. So Wilmington High School, this is just a little snip of the different things that they've been doing at Wilmington High School. You know that they're working on the graduation. There are some posts that teachers are posting about Zoom and feedback. And some of our seniors have been doing things on their own and really promoting the Adopt a Senior, if you've been on Facebook and have seen that, and most recently, Celebrate a Senior. So Wilmington Middle School, they did a musical watch party, so really ranging from all different subjects with, from music to art with the Sketchbook Challenge and virtual pause that they're giving away. They also did a school book club called Masterminds, and you'll see that they did videos for students. All the schools did videos for students, but we wouldn't highlight this one. So the West Intermediate, same type of things. All staff and teachers are working to try to be creative, including our specialists. We don't want to forget them. Our specialists doing enrichment and encouraging students to be creative and physically healthy at home. As you know, the art show is going to be virtual coming up soon. And so you can see that there was a poster of hearts created by the students, and it was gifted to the Boston Hope Center. So it was a special thank you to the essential workers. And there's lots of things like that happening where different schools are having students make cards and helping to deliver those cards or thinking about others and then celebrating that. And they also are doing a staff read aloud and recording each chapter for students. Even Mr. Shaw recorded a chapter and has sent it out, so they do that weekly.
I have to jump in for a second, Lisa, because it's funny, because when we had to sign up for this, I signed up for May 4th because we were supposed to be back in school by May 4th, and I figured I wouldn't have to do it. I realized the morning of May 4th that it was my day and my chapter, so I had to get it done that day. Go ahead. It's all yours.
In a minute. Okay, so you can go to the next slide. Okay, the North. So our school nurses, they made a video that you may have seen that went out on social media. But in addition, different nurses are highlighting different things. You can see what Mrs. Ferrera has done. And just again, teachers supporting teachers. This is just one example, but it's happening in all the schools. I mean, teachers are meeting on their own. They're meeting with us. They're scheduling these meetings, grade-level voluntarily, and you can see lots of smiles on that one from the North teachers. And just different remote check-ins, like this is a great, a great example about, again, all staff members, our school counselors, working so hard and doing check-ins or sending out emails, connecting with students via Zoom and families. And again, a Miss You video, and then you can see those little cute dogs in that one. And Ms. McMenamam does a lunch bunch schedule, so she has an opportunity to do Zoom with students in a lunch bunch manner and keep up. And I know that in other schools, principals and teachers are connecting also individually with students in a variety of ways.
And I can jump in, Lisa, just to add that, you know, seeing everybody's homes during the lunch bunches has been fabulous. And not just Carly has those special blinking lights in her bedroom. Lots of kids have fun lights, and we also got to meet lots of bunny rabbits, chickens, and dogs and kittens. We got to know the whole family, so it was quite a way for the specialists, the counselor, the nurse, as well as myself, to sort of stay connected with the kids.
Great. Tristan, you can go to the next slide. Okay, Woven Street. So another virtual book club going on in celebration of art. And you can see one of the grade-three teachers outside. I'm not sure when that was because of the snow on the ground, but that must have been at the very beginning when we had that, that snow.
It would have been May.
May, yeah. The North Side Pack. So also, this is a great opportunity to highlight our packs. They have been so supportive, contacting the principals, trying to do whatever they can on their end. I know that the North Side Pack did virtual weeks where they can, you know, try to promote some things like Silly Soft Week and Silly Soft Day and Hat Day and just encouraging kids and families to send pictures in and highlight some things from home. And then you can see, again, all the teachers just letting the kids know how much we miss them and how much we wish them well.
And Lisa, I'll just add in a piece about the celebration of art. Our third-grade students were scheduled to go to the Museum of Fine Arts in Boston just days after the closing occurred. And so our third-grade teachers and art teacher, Carol Conquest, and Mrs. Burke and myself, we all put together a celebration of art, showing the students a famous piece of artwork that was a favorite of ours and why we made a personal connection to it. So we gave them a little virtual field trip as if they were going to their own museum. And I will say that I did put the snowman in on purpose because, yes, it has been going on that long. There was snow when we started all of this. Thanks, Lisa.
Great. Awesome. Okay, and Shawshene. So at the Shawshene, just trying to highlight some different things that we were doing. So we do birthday shout-outs once a week, and I don't know what turned into me doing a birthday shout-out once, it turned into all these people doing birthday shout-outs. So we started with all of our enrichment people that have come to the building over the past two years, and we've reached out to them, and they've done some amazing birthday shout-outs. We posted on Twitter, Facebook, but then we also email it to staff and families. So every student that's had a birthday gets a birthday shout-out from, well, they think they're celebrities, but they are celebrities because they've been to the school and they've performed, and it's very exciting for them. So any little touch we can do to kind of brighten their day and let them know that, even though they had a birthday, they're not forgotten, especially in elementary school. And also, we have some book clubs going on, both for students and adults. So our staff has a book club, too, just to kind of keep us connected. And we do Zoom to chat about that. And there's our latest addition. Mrs. Jewett had a baby, and we have a few babies at the Shawshene that have been born this year. But she was a mystery reader showing up on a Zoom, so teachers are still doing mystery readers, and our specialists are joining Zooms and taking part in it, and I know that's happening everywhere, which is just a great way to show our unity. And you may have seen a lot of flat teachers based on Flat Stanley. I couldn't possibly put all the posts about that, but I put a little photo of some of our teachers' flat. And then another unique thing that our PBIS team, which is still meeting, so it's really important to know that a lot of our colleagues who have committees are still continuing those committees. They look different, of course, but PBIS has continued. If they have meetings and they have those schedules, they are, you know, 100% buy-in on that, which has been wonderful. They've been meeting regularly, just as they, just as they were during school. And the PBIS team at the Shawsheen created a matrix for families on the three Rs at home. And then instead of just emailing that out, part of their suggestion was for me to have a video recording myself talking about each of those things to the students so that they can watch it whenever they want and parents can watch it with them and they can refer to it as needed. Okay, Bartwell, so even our little ones need lots of shout-outs. So we have a teacher who did mindfulness videos on YouTube. I believe she updates them weekly because I see those. And there's some pictures of some of the kids with doing special virtual weeks and they send in pictures. They also, Mrs. Walsh does Bartwell bedtime stories. And I think it's missing here, but there it is, our Bartwell dance party on Wednesdays. So she, the school works on that and the kids enjoy it. And of course, a nice video again to remind the students how much we're thinking of them. And the Wildwood Early Childhood Center. So special videos were made by the staff. They actually did several, several of those. And a continuation of staying connected with Zoom during faculty meetings, just another example. Something that the Wildwood does is earning virtual pause at home for showing core values. So that goes along again with PBIS and trying to continue those efforts. This was just a fun picture of shared time scavenger hunt. So you can see that the teachers sort of put faces on, on the students and they had to kind of guess who was who. So teachers are really trying to be creative to keep kids engaged at all ages. Next slide, please. Okay, so this is just our ending and it's sort of just other things that are happening. Like I said, there's just so many things from everywhere, from our special lunches. We have an S, our math coordinator does an estimation jar that goes out. We have the virtual art show coming up. Even CARES, our after-school program, they've been amazing. They send out things to all the kids that would have been in CARES. They do weekly trivia, they do check-ins, they do different contests for them. The school district, physical education started a teddy bear hunt through the town. I'm sure some of you have seen that, where families put teddy bears in the windows and kids walked around and tried to find where all the teddy bears were and locate them. Also, something that we should be very proud of as a district is the virtual parent nights via Zoom. I just highlighted a few, but our special education team and for social emotional learning has been putting out things that are free for parents that if they need help with things or they want to watch, go attend a workshop online, that information's been, been sent out and shared to families and staff. Okay, and then again, just a few more. There's just been so many things that we've missed during this time, like Teacher Appreciation Day and School Nurses and School Lunch Hero Day. And so we have tried to acknowledge all of our colleagues virtually and have tried to include the students in doing that too, whether it's a tweet or a social media post or a thoughtful comment. So we just want everyone to know who's watching this, that, you know, we are trying to acknowledge everyone, even though we're not in school. We do appreciate everyone, including parents, working so hard to make, to make this work. And I think we have a few more slides. So remote learning outreach and engagement, you know, these are things that we've done. School-wide and teacher visits, videos, we try to boost the morale for students and staff. It's so important and parents too and families. Creative ideas to engage students at home, constantly trying to think outside of the box so we can get the kids outside or get them learning in a new way. Lots of things have happened. Some examples are just like flipgrid videos that are engaging students. Lots of social media posts. Principals have done outreach with personal phone calls or messages, postcards, emails, newsletters, holding office hours weekly just for families to join in or contact. We're, we're constantly available for, for any questions or for any families that need assistance. And we're always doing frequent check-ins, either social media, special deliveries of meals, musical instruments, birthday card, you know, whatever it is that, that we can do for the kids and the families. We're really trying to think outside of the box to do that. And just looking ahead, this is just a few things. There's so many things, I feel like every day we keep adding to our list. But I'm sure you're all aware that Linda has been working so hard and doing a great job at preparing for graduation preparations, the virtual scholarship night, which is coming up, our virtual district art show, I believe that's the 29th, that will be available. They're working on retirement concert, concert for Miss Mehdi. And continued communication with the families, up to date with new information. We're constantly working on that. As a district, all the schools are really working on creative goodbyes for students moving on to new schools. Like I said, our pack has been wonderful. The schools are doing things, they may not look the same. Some schools are doing certificates and T-shirts and continuing with what the tradition would normally be at the school. We're trying to continue with those types of things for, for students leaving us. We know that there are a lot of transitions coming up and orientations that would normally take place in May. We've thought about that. We're in the process of creating video or Zoom orientations for students entering all of the new schools. So that is an effort that we're, we're, we're continuing to work on currently. Some of you may be aware that the allergy transition meetings are still going to be held, but they've pushed that to August and all those parents are aware of that. So again, that is something that would have happened in the schools. And we are in the process of organizing student and parent pickup of the student belongings to be organized by the school. And we're really looking forward to getting that accomplished in the next two weeks. And there is already a plan for student medication pickup and that is organized for next week, I believe. So those are, that's just a glimpse. And I'm sure if you have any questions, my colleagues will help answer. We just thought if one person went through the slideshow, it would be the easiest since we're on Zoom. So that's all, thank you.
Thank you very, very much, Mrs. King, we appreciate it. I see some questions, Mrs. Newhouse.
I just want to say thank you to all the administrators for all your hard work. I think all of you have gone above and beyond during this hard time and it's much appreciated. And I just wanted to acknowledge it.
Thank you, Mrs. Burns.
Thank you, I echo Mrs. Newhouse's remarks. I think, I couldn't say it any better than she did. So, but I did have a question regarding the art show. Can you tell me, how do you access it and for how long will it be available?
So I, I'm not sure about how long it will be available or how they're going to access it yet. I know that they're going to send an email out with information on that. I do know it's May 29th. So I'm thinking it might be like a video where they, where people can watch it and see all the different things that, that have been displayed, like all the different teachers are coordinating it.
MJ, there is a, there is a link on the website already to the, to where you can go to view it. So if you go to the websites there.
Oh, perfect, so it's on the public, the district's website?
Yes, you go to the main page, it's under the news, it's the first news item. You just click there and it brings you.
Perfect, thank, thank you.
Mr. Fenelly.
I don't have a question, I just wanted to say thank you again. I know it's, it's nice to see sort of what everybody else is doing. You know, most of you guys know my kids are both at the same, same school. So being able to see what the rest of the district has been doing for their, their staff, their students has been great, so I appreciate the update, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else, Mr. Raxdale?
Nothing new for me, but it really can't be said enough that this has been a trial by fire. And, you know, you don't, you don't know what you're made of until you have a test like this. And I think that, you know, our administrators and, you know, thank you so much to the principals for, you know, pushing our district forward and keeping our kids learning. And this is an amazing time to be in education, not necessarily a good way. But thank you all so much for everything you've done.
Mr. Bjork.
I actually, I try not to be repetitive when my colleagues have said all the right things and they have, but it really can't be said enough how much we appreciate, appreciate all of the work that you guys are doing. Thank you all.
Thank you, I think that's everybody. We do appreciate the update, we appreciate all that you're doing behind the scenes. And it's wonderful just to see your faces. And so thank you for being here this evening. I know it's, it's nice to have us all virtually in one place. So good luck with the remainder of the school year. And we look forward to seeing what other creative things you have up your sleeves in the next few weeks. So thank you. Dr. Brand, do you want to say anything?
No, thank you for your kind comments and thank you too, again, to our principals for their work in putting that brief snapshot together that, as you can imagine, only touches the surface or scratches the surface in terms of the many, many things that are out there and the accolades. I know I've heard from many, many families and parents who have reached out as well to share their things. So it's all, all very much appreciated. And we will obviously, as a team, continue to press forward, working hard and closely over the number, the next number of months with full anticipation that, and I'll touch upon this in a moment, when school, you know, when school resumes, it will look quite different than what we're used to. And so this team here collectively, in addition to the members of the central office team, has spent an awful lot of time on Zoom. And, but, but I couldn't be prouder of the work that they've done. They're, they're a great group to work with, so thank you for allowing me to present tonight.
Thank you.
With that, I'll move on to the third item under the superintendent update. And just a brief mention of the Wilmington Public Schools website. And it's appropriate that Mr. Lord is here with us as well. But I just wanted to take this opportunity and share with the committee and the community that this is, this is work that we are still pressing ahead with. It's been mentioned before and I acknowledge that one of the areas that certainly has been in need of attention. And, you know, think about, no more of a critical time than these, and this time rather, around communication. And that's our, our district and school websites are in need of an overhaul. And that became pretty clear and based upon the feedback when I, when I entered the district originally. And thank you, there was not the capacity, the time to entertain the possibility of exploring a new platform and, and shifting our entire web presence over. But with Mr. Lord's leadership and his hard work behind the scenes, I'm pleased to be able to share with the community that we are, even during these times, heading in this path. There's been an awful lot of work behind the scenes that Ken has led over the last good number of weeks with a number of people at his staff. And I'll let him just briefly speak to this, but the plan is to make this transition going into July. And so when we start the year new next year, we will have a completely new look. We're trying to be very thoughtful around the layout of content. And obviously, the key would be making sure that we can provide meaningful and helpful content to our community. So I'm not sure, Ken, if you want to add anything to the transition to just let folks know. And I want to thank you again for all of your work because it's been immense on top of everything else.
Thank you. Just one important point is our web address is not going to change, will still be wpsk12.com. The switch over to the new website will likely happen the last week or two of June. Contract with the existing web service, so we'll end before then. So we'll switch over to the new site. We've worked very hard picking out design and working on the menu layout and the pages. And work will continue after we go live to build out more pages and additional information and continue to fill the website out and train users. Combined with that website, we're also moving to a new parent notification system. So you're used to the blackboard message system, that we're going to be going with the School Messenger Communicate System, which is part of their web product that we're purchasing. So it's one big package that we're switching to.
And that was it unless there are any questions. But really just an opportunity to take advantage of here and to let people know to stay tuned. And we'll have a new look coming soon. And that's it for the superintendent's report this evening.
Thank you, any questions from the committee? Mr. Raxdale?
I was wondering if there is going to be in the development of the website, if there's going to be any essentially kind of community user testing in redesigns that I've been, I don't want to say exactly a part of because, but just as a user of websites that have been redesigned, I've found one of the most useful things is when they, you know, throw a potential design at you and basically say, where would you look to try and find this? And so you poke around and, you know, what looks like the most likely place where you'll find that? And then you kind of take that information to go back and, and think about your menus and design and where to put things and so forth. Is there going to be anything similar to that?
We always welcome feedback on our websites or any part of our school technology or any, any phase of what we're doing here. There's no formal phase of user testing planned for that. What we did do was research within age of the company, many different school websites and looked at example after example and tried to find the menu structure that we felt would work best and is quite common with other schools. We're also working very hard to have the menu structure be uniform throughout the site so that the same menu on each site, there's the same sort of information, everything's in the same place.
And I just, one, just one other question as well is that the, I think one of the things that, that is most problematic on our current site is the internal search feature, which seems to rarely find what it is that you're looking for and often is kind of a mystery of how on earth it came up with whatever it does show you. I would hope that, that an improved search functionality would be a priority for, for the new site.
Yes, that was one of the key things we looked at. We examined, I can't remember, six or eight different web providers. And that was one of the key areas we looked at was what the search engine was like, how well it worked. We tested sample school sites to see how effective it was. And we felt we've selected School Messenger is the platform we'll be using. And we felt that was the most effective with their search engine for their backend web editing and how that worked, the ability to integrate the website with the parent notification system so an administrator can go on and push out something through either their social media or to the parents and it also pop up in the news. So we're putting the same type of information in multiple channels so we communicate more effectively.
Excellent, thank you, any other questions?
Actually, I just, I just had one more thing on top is that is this new system, the new website going to be also integrated with the WPS Connect app?
No, as a matter of fact, we won't have an app. The WPS Connect app is part of the blackboard system. At this time, we're not going to have an app. The new websites are all 100% mobile-aware. So most web providers are moving away from a separate app and have built their platform. So when you go to the website with your phone, your iPad, your tablet, whatever, the site is responsive and will work perfectly with any type of phone. So most of the web providers moved, are moving away from that. They do have a secondary app, it's quite expensive to develop, but they're really pushing, almost all the vendors were pushing towards moving away from apps.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lord. Any other questions from the committee? Okay, all right, seeing none, we will move on to public comment. And Tristan, there is no public comment tonight, correct? Okay, which brings us to old business, there is no old business. So we'll move right along to number eight, which is new business. Administrators, you are more than welcome to stay, but I won't be upset if I suddenly realize you're no longer there, if that's what you're concerned about. But you're, we would love to have you before you, if you do sign off. We just want to again say thank you very much and please extend our gratitude to, to your teachers and your staff, to all of your peers and everyone else who I know is working so diligently behind the scenes. We are, we are deeply grateful.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
That brings us to COVID-19 update, Dr. Brand.
Sure, thank you. There are four items listed under this section, but actually, as fluid as this all is, there are a couple of more things to add to it, so we'll just briefly touch upon those. I want to spend a couple of minutes just sharing with the community thoughts around our reopening. Well, somewhat early, it's nevertheless timely. I'll ask Dr. Regan to provide a brief update in a moment around the remote learning update through this extended closure. And then I thought I would take the chance, and again, knowing that we have many members of our community who are tuning in, to just talk briefly about summer programming and the reopening of town parks and fields. The two additional items are student belongings at the school that I'll just touch upon and financial, financial planning update that Mr. Regan will speak to. Tristan, if you could, if you wouldn't mind, screen share, please, for the first item. There, there is in your packet, it was a late edition, and so to that end, I do apologize, but for maybe the community who may be interested in this, in addition to this very brief PowerPoint, there is a memo that accompanies this. And it's, it is most certainly not lost upon me, as I think most everyone, that while we're still making our way through the next number of weeks towards the official end of school, people's minds are quickly thinking towards reopening and what that looks like. As I've mentioned before, the Department of Education for the Commissioner has pulled together a very large and extensive stakeholder group to try and focus on exactly what school reopening in Massachusetts will look like. This work is underway. There's no definitive timeline that I'm to understand, except at some point, probably towards the end of June is what I'm told. I don't know that officially, but that's what my understanding is. And so, you know, as we find ourselves, obviously, almost June 1st, it seems to me like we need to mobilize and position ourselves now to start to be ready. And there are, well, there's still some unknowns, and the guidance that is to come from the Department of Education and/or other state agencies or local agencies around what reopening looks like, it would seem to me that we have at least a starting point around some aspects that we can start to envision and prepare for. There goes with that question, as, as I'm thinking ahead to our reopening, that we will, of course, need to ensure front and side that the social, emotional health and well-being of our students and staff is paramount, as we've tried to do over the course of these last number of weeks and months. It, it would seem, I'm sure, more likely than not to anybody who is more closely following the news and starting to tune into some of the conversations with, with regards to schools and colleges and universities throughout the country, what some of those visions are looking like in terms of school reopening. At the very least, social distancing. But with the assumption that that is going to be a requirement, an expectation, that very quickly will lead to an alteration, I would suggest, in terms of our regular organization. How many students can we reasonably transport on school buses? How many can we have in classrooms? What does cafeteria service, if at all, look like? So, these are large looming questions that are certainly out there with no specific answers right now. And so, to that end, it's also increasingly possible and perhaps likely that intermittent closures may be, maybe what we would be looking at, perhaps continuation to some degree of virtual or remote learning, the state that we're in right now. All of these things are possibilities as we, as we think to, to the future. Tristan, next slide. So, as, as all of that comes into focus, it seems to me like there are three priorities that we need to be actively thinking about as a district and as a leadership team, inclusive of you all as the school committee. And I would suggest, this certainly could be expanded in time, but I would suggest that there are three priorities as I see them right now. First off, safe and healthy environments, of course, for, for everyone. There, to, to expand upon the idea, if social distancing is necessary, in which we need to be flexible with our scheduling, with our service provision, how we routinely embark upon the provision of service. Again, that might start in the morning with student transportation. It will involve, obviously, consideration of health protocols and procedures for staff and students. And how do we, you know, as the overarching focus, how do we make sure that our, our facilities are safe for everyone to, to occupy? And so, operations, facilities, scheduling, and the like, I think, fall into this, this domain. Priority number two, of course, would be centering around educational planning and programming. Again, whether that's remote learning, some hybrid model that sees students in some days, out other days, or some combination thereof. Clearly, if, if it's anything other than the norm, we're going to have to think about what that looks like from a provision of, of teaching and learning. Priority three, inclusivity, equity, and support. This has obviously been a theme of some consideration over the last number of months, but it's broad. I'm not sure that it's necessarily as, as, as straightforward to wrap one's thoughts around as priority number one and number two. But we do know that we already have certainly, I, I believe, been thinking about this, but I think we need to continue to expand our, around what this really means to try and engage and include and support all members of our community, students and families during this time. So, as, as we sit here right now, those are, I think, the three priorities that seem at least to get us started. Tristan, please. So, sort of just a graphical overview of what, what I envisioning and proposing here for what would be a school reopening advisory group. Obviously, the close collaboration between the school committee and myself as a link to our organization as a whole, but obviously to the community is grateful. Really seems to me that when we start to think more at the micro level, if you will, about breaking these out, it falls into two silos. One, operations. And obviously, I'll continue to lean very much on the central office leadership team for, or, you know, connecting with the various key leaders and staff within our facilities department, our health and food services, transportation, and just simple overall buildings and operations. And then the educational programming and services side of things. At least, again, here at the outset, thinking about access and equity, teaching and learning, technology, social and emotional support, that seem to fall more towards that side. So, it just, this was helpful, at least for me, to start to think about trying to capture, encapsulate, sorry, all of the different areas that I think would be key and important for us to think about reopening school in the long run. Next slide. And, and so, just in the final point, you know, I, you know, spotlighted a few names there as part of our leadership team, Christine Elliott. I'm not sure if she's still on the call, but this is her first committee that she'll be a part of, but certainly will, will look to work collaboratively with, obviously, many, many others to make sure that we get this right and that we can try and put forth a plan that is adaptable to the conditions in which we're going to find ourselves in. Again, as I stated at the outset, even though this guidance from the commissioner is anticipated, even though it's probable that we'll receive more information from, say, the governor's office, it's impossible to wait until the end of June, in my opinion, to start this planning now. And even at the very basic level, planning for what necessary personal protective equipment might look like or might need to look like, that's something that we need to start quickly and soon. So, I wanted to share that with you. I'm happy to take any questions that you might have, but really, this is the first item, just intended to be informational, but also to point towards the thinking that we're very quickly going to have to head in. You know, the first part of school, again, whatever form or function that looks like at the end of August is not that far away, and this is going to be a workload of work if we're talking about anything that varies from traditional school, school opening and functioning in three months from now. So, I'll pause there and I'll take any questions if you have any.
Mrs. Burns?
Thank you. I just, I know this is kind of a cart before the horse kind of question, but I ask it in the sense that so many of our students, what diverse learners, access their learning through other services that we offer. And when I mean that, I mean through the arts, through technology, through robotics, through athletics, through the whole spectrum. Again, I know it's a little premature, but I, as this group kind of speaks about the future and what that could possibly look like, I just didn't know if, if you have that, if that's an element as a part of that discussion. Once we get through the, the biggest piece of how we're getting staff and students safely back into our schools and learning and such, I just didn't know, and again, not knowing where society will go with this, you know, pan epidemic, I, I just didn't know if you had any preliminary or initial thoughts, as rudimentary as they could be at this juncture.
Not really, except I guess to say that I think that so much of that would be driven by what the reality looks like for, for, for students' engagement in, you know, in school. And so, what I mean by that, you come to the fault. What I mean by that is, you know, it might be one thing to talk about a, a situation in which it's a hybrid model, and hybrid is starting to take on different meanings in this context, but is it one day in and one day out? Is it one week in, one week out? You know, those are some of the, those are some of the, for folks who are not tuning into this, those are some of the conversations that absolutely are starting to take some shape in different parts of the country. I'm not saying that that's the direction of Massachusetts will go. But if it's a hybrid situation, then perhaps there is indeed the opportunity to, when students are in session, still engage in some of those courses or, or learning opportunities that they might. If we're talking about continuation of remote learning, that might be very different. So, I think that the answer ultimately to that, and, you know, ultimately with the program, the programmatic experience is going to be for students, is going to be contingent upon, you know, and what the reality is that we're talking. And, and of course, this might change as well. You know, we, we might be talking about a number of transitions through next year. You know, first part of the year might look very different than the latter part, so. But it's something that, under that teaching and learning aspect, I think we, we, we ought to be thinking about it. So, I do appreciate you.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Mr. Ragsdale?
I'm mute myself. In addition to it looking different at different times of the year, how much thought is there to how much, how different it will look potentially at different schools? Because I think that's another big piece of this puzzle, is that things are simply going to look differently at the, you know, at the high school. It's not going to be the same situation as we have at the Boutwell or at Woburn Street, both for good and ill. It's not that one is automatically easier than the other, that I think the challenges are going to be different. And that's going to be, as much as we want to have a district-wide policy in some ways, I think it also has to be very situational and very school-specific.
Yeah, and I, to me, I think so much of the answer to that question rests with what specifically the recommendations are from, from the state around, you know, around what this looks like for students. You know, are we truly talking about a six-foot perimeter around students at all time? And so, so I, I understand what you're saying, and that could look very different. You know, our classrooms are very fundamental or basic level. And maybe that's part of your, I guess, your question in terms of, you know, some of our classrooms, even to take a typical classroom, and let's just say hypothetically, that the requirement is reduce capacity by 50% and spread out by six feet, you know, that may not even be possible in some of our classrooms on the smaller side. So, that, if that were, if that were the requirement, that would take a whole different shape and form that, you know, as we speak here right now, I truly don't even know what that would look like. And, and, and so, that's the, that's the push in, in having a call with the, as a part of the call with the Commissioner of Education actually earlier today. You know, certainly, my colleagues are pressing very hard on that understandably in terms of sooner the better because of all of the necessary adjustments that are going to need to be made.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, we'll, we'll have to see how things come out, but this, it's, it's hard to see how we square this circle. Like, the, to say, to say to kids that, you know, when you, you know, when you're in school, you essentially can't socialize except from a distance, that, you know, we're doing, if we're doing full school days, that they don't have the, sort of the emotional release of being able to play or just talk or chat. There, I think that the, the deeper you really try to think what this looks like, the harder it is to see how, how we're, how we're going to do it successfully. It is, it is not, to say it's not easy is a silly statement, but this seems extraordinarily difficult, and we, we will do the best we can. But this is going to be really, really hard.
Any other questions from the committee? Mr. Samaha?
I don't really have a question. I just, thank you for like, for, for thinking about this and not sort of waiting for the, for the state to sort of say, okay, here's what we're thinking, and then reacting from there, but being proactive with it. I think that's going to be huge, because like, what Mr. Ragsdale said, I mean, I teach high school, and, and, you know, they're high school kids, so they should be able to keep, you know, six feet apart from each other, but I don't see, I don't see, I don't see, I don't see how class is changing in a hallway, kids moving in a hall. I don't see how any of that stuff is gonna, is gonna work. So, let alone elementary schools. I mean, it's, it's, it's like, you know, it's just, it's going to be a big, there's so many, so many different moving parts and so many different things that we have to think about, because even, say, it's safe to go back, right? That doesn't necessarily mean that we can follow through with, you know, with everything. So, I just, I'm just, I guess what I'm saying is, thank you for thinking, thinking ahead and not sort of being reactive with it.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
I thought for a moment we were going to say something else when you said this was going to be a big, but you took me in a different direction there for a moment. Anyway, so.
It caught myself.
Yes. All right. And, and in the memo, I did note, and I, very, just the final piece, certainly not not tonight, but I would very much like to, my suggestion, and you could talk about this perhaps more in a future day, that my, my suggestion was perhaps having a couple of school committee members to sort of regularly connect with this. I'm not necessarily suggesting that this is a, a formal subcommittee of the sort, but I don't know. It seemed to me like the opportunity to regularly engage some school committee members as a link to the community could be very helpful in some of this work, too. So, we can, we can certainly come back to that, but I, I do think that that's, that'll be an important piece here as well going forward. Item B, under COVID-19, remote learning update during extended closure. I'll ask Dr. Regan, if you will, to just chime in on this.
Thank you. In your, in your packets, you received a, like a one-page summary of the, what we looked at as three phases of remote learning. You know, really, our phase one was the first couple of weeks where we did some enrichment activities and we're waiting for guidance from the state, which ended up coming in at the end of March. We then went into real remote learning, which, as you know, was focused on sort of deeper dives into what was already learned. We didn't, at that moment, ask teachers to sort of move on with the curriculum. And then the state, at the end of April, came out with their third doc, well, really, their second official document for guidance that sort of gave the green light to move on to new learning. And with that, they gave some documents, one for the elementary, one for the secondary, that highlighted what they called the standards that were most critical for student success moving on to the next grade. So, we've been working, as you know, to iron out the details around this with the teachers' union, and we're, we're now at a place where we can move forward with the phase three. So, some information has already been pushed out to teachers today. From K-5, we did put together a document to help, to help teachers sort of digest what the state sent out in terms of their prerequisite standards. That document for both elementary and secondary was quite in-depth and overwhelming, particularly if you're looking at mathematics. And so, we tried to say, all right, there's three weeks left. Here are some priorities that we want you to focus on. And the reason we're doing that is because we anticipate that over the summer, there's going to be, there's going to need to be some sort of inventory taken, where we're going to need to be soliciting information from teachers to figure out, okay, what, what did you reach, what didn't you reach in terms of the curriculum and standards, so that there can be some adjustments made in the fall. As you know, there is curriculum money for curriculum development in the summer, and I've met with both the secondary and the elementary curriculum teams and let them know that the focus of that money will be less likely around sort of new course development or revamping courses, which is how it's typically been spent, and more likely be spent on creating some, some teams, either by discipline or by level, that are, are putting together the, you know, the steps necessary. you know, the steps necessary to sort of get a sense of where we are in terms of the curriculum. It's important for everyone to keep in mind, I know you know this, but for parents at home who are concerned about students falling behind, this is not a Wilmington issue, this is a, a national issue, so we're not alone in this. And, you know, we have a good team of curriculum leaders that are, are really keyed into this and ready to support. Christine, of course, but also ready to support teachers as we, as we sort of map this out and figure out exactly where we are starting. What's our starting point going to be? And maybe that starting point isn't decided right away. Maybe, you know, we need to get kids back in the classrooms and get an assessment sort of where they are as well. But all of this pre-work that we'll try and get done in the summer as well. The, the new phase that was recently unveiled by the, the department a few weeks ago, really just builds upon what they put out at the end of March. It, it does again, talk about new learning, but it, it also focuses a lot more on engagement and expectations for schools to try and engage those students that have just not been engaged, or those families that have not been engaged. And our approach here has largely been to sort of take the heavy lifting of that off of the teachers. You know, they should do that initial outreach and we've instructed them through principals to say, look, if, if you can't reach a student and you've tried multiple times, let's give that student's name to the administration or to, you know, whether it's a social worker or a school psychologist or a guidance counselor. And, and we'll take it from you and now we're going to try multiple different, you know, strategies to try and reach students. So, you know, in some cases, I know, I know at the middle school, for example, the school resource officer has been willing to drive to homes and make sure that children are okay. Because that's really our worry, we want to make sure that they're okay. It's less about them not doing their remote work as much as just making sure that they're safe and they're healthy and they're well. Knowing that they may be living in a circumstance where they have a sick relative, or they're sick themselves, or parents are out of work, or, you know, whatever it is that could be creating an environment for them where they can't plug in. So this connection piece is engagement piece was really a big part moving into phase three. And the other element, just to touch upon tonight, and then I can take questions. There, there've been a lot of questions among parents and teachers alike about how we would grade. And it's, it's, it's a tough conversation because on the one hand, we want kids to be engaged and it should be, it's, it's less about sort of what their final grade is going to be. We want them to be well and safe and engaged with their teachers and peers and, you know, safely, of course, from a distance, but, but we know that there needs to be some acknowledgement of the work. So at the elementary level where we have a standards based report card, in consultation with, with teachers and administrators, we felt that it just wouldn't be appropriate or, or, or we wouldn't be able to really use that report card for trimester three the way it's intended to be. Because we, we just haven't had kids in a typical environment. And so there's really no way for teachers to measure whether or not they met those standards. So what we're going to do is we're going to simply use the comment feature for trimester three at the elementary level. And teachers are going to be asked to put in comments, sort of close out the year. If they want to make a comment on, on the, on, on some of the work that they've seen, they can. But we're really going to try to use it sort of as a wrap up, right? Teachers are unable to say goodbye to their students, this is a way to do it in writing if they want to do that as well. But we're being flexible in terms of what they, they put in there, but they won't be entering numbers or letters into the different standard categories for trimester three. That was already done for one and two, but it won't be done for trimester three. At the middle school level, in the high school level, they'll, they'll use two different grading systems, but similar ideas but different language. At the middle school, a student will be graded by each teacher in categories of participated, partially participated and did not participate in the remote learning. So at the high school level, similar idea, but Linda, it's a little different, it's the high school. So she, she was more inclined to use language like full credit, partial credit and no credit. That was some of the recommended language that we got from Desi. There could be confusion and we'll make sure that we, we publicize this, that the word credit shouldn't lead parents to think that if they get a no credit for fourth quarter, that that means that it's going to have an impact on their final grade. Both the middle school and the high school, these fourth quarter grades are not going to be averaged in. For, at the high school won't be averaging for GPA, at the middle school, it's not going to be averaging for their final grade. And, and we understand there could be some confusion there, so we'll make sure that that is, is communicated out through Ms. Peters and, and, and Dr. Burke. So at, at the, at those two buildings, the high school and the middle school where it's a little more complex, the principals will make sure that they get information out to teachers so they know exactly what's expected of them in terms of grading. And at the elementary school, you know, we'll do the same, obviously. One, one other thing at the elementary school too, we are crafting a, a universal letter that's going to go home with the report card. It's going to go home, it's going to go out electronically with the report card, so all families understand why they're not seeing the standards based grading marked in the, on the report card. So we'll, we'll talk about that in this letter that will go to all elementary families standard. And I don't know, Dr. Brandon, is there other things you want me to touch upon or if there are questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them.
Dr. Regan, I just have a quick question and then I'll open it up. I'm sure there are some others. You say that it won't affect the final grade. Does that mean that there will be a final grade for middle school students based on quarters one and two?
That's correct.
Okay. And the same at the high school, except they did have grades.
Yeah. The middle school, middle school will purely be one and two. The high school will be one and two, plus they had this sort of limbo period after the closure before we sort of started picking up speed again. So during that time, we allowed high school students to, to make up work or continue to complete assignments. So those would essentially be graded to support students' progress, so. But nothing beyond that would, would weigh in at all.
Okay. Questions from the committee? Mrs. Burns?
Dr. Regan, I had just a quick question. So for those students who may have been struggling a little bit prior to the closure, are there any, granted, we've gone through so many transitions, I don't know if I should be asking this question. Are there, are there any opportunities for those students to try to improve their, especially, I'm thinking more of the high school, their grade point average, especially because of either colleges or looking towards colleges. I just didn't know if, if staff were working individually to the, the students have reached, who have reached out in order to, to try to improve their grade point average before the end of the year kind of thing. Not sure if I'm asking the question as well as I'd like, but I, I'm hoping that you might kind of have an idea as to what I'm trying to learn.
I think there's a couple of things. Number one, at the teacher level, you know, once we closed, we, we closed right around the time that the, that the quarter was closing, right? So then where we were in that, that period of time before remote learning actually kicked in, you know, those teachers were encouraged to let kids at that point turn in work that they hadn't turned in before. Extend deadlines, right? Do whatever you can, because kids are, we want to engage them. So what is a, what, what better way to engage them, say, look, guys, you're, you're behind on this project or you didn't turn in this essay. You know, you have this opportunity now, it's a unique opportunity to, to sort of make up that lost work. So that was, that was highly encouraged at the teacher level. Beyond that, where kids weren't taking advantage, or if they were senior, for example, and we were afraid that they were going to end up in a situation where graduation would be in jeopardy. We went above the teacher level and we, we sort of drilled down, well, not we, but they drilled down, you know, on the, on the individual kid level through guidance counselors and administrators and other support staff at the school to sort of coach those students through the steps that they needed to take to make sure that they were in good standing to graduate. From what I understand from Ms. Peters, at the end of the day, the good news is students that were expected to receive diplomas, my understanding, are the students that won't receive their diplomas. So they were able to sort of keep those students on track and in some cases maybe even bring kids along that were, that were really struggling. So, and, and we did all of that, keeping in mind that, as I said earlier, we didn't know the home situations and how far, how hard we could push. I mean, in some cases at the high school level, you had students that were bringing in the only paycheck in the house because both parents were laid off and they were working double shifts at Market Basket. So that's, that's reality. And, and so for those students, we tried, they tried different strategies to try and help them figure out how to, how to make that work. It's really quite amazing when you think about what some of these young people are going through to try and support their families.
Great, thank you so very much.
Other questions from the committee? Thank you very, very much, Dr. Regan, that was very helpful. And I think we'll, can you hear me okay? Girl looking around or something. Very helpful and I'm sure the community and the family will, families will be very pleased to, to hear the update, so thank you. Next, we have item A C, which is summer programs, Dr. Brandt?
Sure, just very quickly, C and D really are quite similar, but um, I just wanted to take this opportunity again. And, and as the community is aware, we made the difficult decision about a week ago to cancel summer programming in Wilmington, in Wilmington Public Schools, really there are three prongs to that, generally speaking. One is the CARES program. One is the athletic camps, and then the other is the extended year program. I, I use the term perhaps inappropriately, but the summer school in the, on the agenda. The first two, CARES and the athletic camps, based upon a thorough examination of what would be possible and based upon the requirements by the state and in consultation with our local board of health and the respective directors of those programs, it was just deemed not feasible, not possible to be able to unfortunately run those programs. And so those have been canceled. The extended year program services approximately 200 students connected with service delivery, needs is part of our, our student support services program. The recommendation from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, recommended to districts to move to virtual or remote programming, at least at the outset of the school year. But to hold the opportunity to perhaps revise that depending on the, the regulations or the guidance's shifts as we get into the summer. And so the decision in, in my consultation with Alice is to go in that direction. And so we will be working hard to formalize what exactly that looks like. But again, as to, just to state, the Department of Education recommended that districts move in that direction. The other, just to really take the opportunity to, to, to be well aware of the fact that we have many community members who are watching this as it relates to summer closure, this is not, not a school issue, but just also a number of updates coming from Mr. Hall and the town around parks and recreation. There's information out there as well as part of the phase one reopening that includes athletic fields and the track, it's, those are starting to open up our fields. There are restrictions in all of these, but you can find more information on the town website for members of our community who might be interested for more information. The final two things not listed under the COVID-19 update, but are important and timely to let you be aware of. One reopening of buildings, we're in the process of making sure that we can create the opportunity for staff to get in the buildings to close out for summer cleaning. And as part of that, principals are working on a plan with volunteers of their staff to gather materials and, and possessions for families, for students, and allow families to pick those up. So that work has begun and will span the next number of weeks, no doubt. And then finally, the financial outlook, before turning it over to Mr. Rosario just briefly. From, from, I know many of us who are closely plugged into the news and the predictions of the impact financially of this on towns and schools. We are slowly but surely starting to get information about this. This is going to be, I think by all accounts, a very difficult and challenging financial picture over the next, perhaps year to, to more, and, and that's starting to surface for us as a district. And we're not going to be unique in this, we will of course be right alongside everybody else. But this is going to be very, very challenging terrain that we're moving into financially. Paul, do you want to just add to that in terms of the update? Mr. Rosario, still with us?
I'm mute. Help me if I unmute myself. As we all know, the, the relationship between the town and the schools in this community is outstanding. Last week, Superintendent and I met with Jeff Paul, the town manager and some of his staff. And some work they had done and had identified potential of over a million and a half dollar revenue shortfall for FY21 on the town side. And their projections looked at a reduction in chapter 70, which is aids to the, the school districts, or about 5%. Almost a 15% reduction in government aid, some meals tax, we've done lots of revenue excise tax and some other things. So we met and to bridge that 1.5 million dollar gap, the town manager had done some work to kind of move around some funding sources, if you will. And there was three items that impacted the schools or, or one initially. And that was in our capital budget, we had $200,000 related to a school facility study. And as we went through the MSBA process, we were kind of told by MSBA that you probably don't want to spend that money in doing a facility study now in case you get invited into their program because you'd have to spend that money again. So with that, we decided collectively to reduce that $200,000 line item to 100, to 80,000. So savings, if you will, a reduction of 120,000. Other items that the town manager identified were really on the town side, leaving the schools to come up with another $82,000 to cut in our FY21 budget. We did, and the items we cut were really on the capital side. 82,000, 25,000, we had earmark for administrative computers replacement. We're going to forego that. And we are moving, we had an elementary projector replacement project. And we're moving $57,000 of that project out to FY22. In both of those, we had discussions with Mr. Ward and so forth and with the town. So out of that 1.5 million dollar shortfall, right now, the impact to the schools were, you know, those three items from a school perspective, there were other items on, on the town side. But again, it goes to show the relationship we have with the town. Now, the, that was last week, you know, toward the end of last week. The financial picture in the state continues to change and not in a positive way, so who knows where this is going to come. But right now, that's kind of where we stand. So the 1.5 million dollar shortfall has been accounted for in some form or fashion between the, the town and the schools. But again, the relationship is, is just outstanding. So that was one area. Another area, just informationally, is, as you're aware, a town meeting is scheduled for June 27. And if for any reason, hopefully, there is no reason, but for any reason, town meeting does not occur. In order for the town to be able to operate in July, they have to do what they call a 112 budget. So the town, again, we had worked with the town to come up with some numbers that the town has to send a plan, if you will, a 112 or spending plan for July to the Director of Account to the Mass Department Revenue. So I believe they are doing that. And what that does is, is if it doesn't happen to be a town meeting before June 30, hopefully there is, but if there isn't, the town could still operate in the month of July from a budgetary standpoint, in a funding standpoint. So that work was done, the majority of it was done by the town. The town manager and the town accountant did yeoman's work on that with some input from us. So that's been, I think filed, if not yet, it will be. But just to allow the, the, the town to continue to operate in, in July in case like that happens. And just finally, the FY20 budget, Superintendent did allude to PPE, Personal Protective Equipment. And I'm not going to get into any specifics right now, but we were on a call today and the Commissioner of Education is going to send some guidance out. is going to send some guidance out to districts to potentially purchase some protective equipment the next school year. Where the funds are going to come from, no one really knows. And it's seems like it may be although the state might have some money, but I think a lot of it might be, you know, district to district. So, you know, so even FY20, there may be some expenditures that we did not anticipate that we may have to incur. We don't have the guidance yet and won't come out until sometime next week. But then we have to kind of move forward and decide as a school system in a town what what we're going to do around that. So I just wanted you to be aware of the the financial kind of picture and where we stand. And again, the the reduction that we made, I think, you know, didn't impact any of our real operations and Mr. Ward is able to to deal with the capital changes that we that we did make. So. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Rosario. Questions, Mrs. Burns?
I mean, I know, again, cut before the horse gal. But the and of course, we don't know, we won't know more until next week. And I'm sure it'll change as we evolve and get closer to the next school year. But PPE and the proper use of PPE can be a very exorbitant expenditure because it's not something that you can you're you're supposed to reuse. It has to be replaced. And that's, I'm sure the Commissioner Riley probably has that in mind or weighing that in mind as he develops these guidelines, which I do probably expect to change as we go along. But that, I think, the conversation Dr. Brandt had with regards to planning for the next school year may be impacted with regards to if we can meet the PPE needs within our district and community in order to operate the schools. So I just wanted to make that comment.
Thank you, Mrs. Burns. Mr. Bjork?
Again, I'd just like to say that I understand the concerns, the financial concerns. But my thought is that this town has done an amazing job of being very conservative fiscally. And as a result, we've built up a free cash reserve that if I'm not mistaken, it's about 24 million. And that is, as we've been told for many, many years, for a rainy day. It is it's raining, it's hailing, it's sleeting. I don't know what the plans are for for those funds, but I hope that we're not going to cut our budget too much when we have when we have the means to to not. And I and I know, and I know, Paul and Glenn, that we can certainly rely on you guys to to state their case. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bjork. Mrs. Newhouse?
I echo what Mr. Bjork had to say. You know, there is a rainy day fund, and I think it's important because I think beyond the PPE, there could be other costs, you know, possibly extra school buses. You know, a number of different costs that we may not be looking at. And I think it's important that we need to keep the budget in mind that we need to continue to support our students and not let the budget get cut too far. So we're pulling supports for our students because I think it's going to be even more important to the return of school next year. The social emotional supports may need to be increased as well to support our students because this, you know, it's been traumatic for many. And if we need to cut services, it's going to be at a detriment to our students. So I mean, I know we'll all be working together and hopefully we can work with the town that, you know, we can find this money to support the students to the best of our abilities.
Thank you, Mrs. Newhouse. Mr. Raxdale?
I was wondering if Mr. Gero can speak a little bit more to the possible transportation issues because that seems to be the largest issue immediately facing districts. If if we have to have, you know, six feet separation socially distant school busing, then it seems impossible to do that without increasing the number of buses. And I think I recall that adding adding a bus is approximately, I don't know, $65,000, something like that. It's, you know, it's an enormous expense. And I wonder if you could speak to that a little bit.
Yeah, I mean, we've started to do a little work looking at that. Again, in the commissioner's call today, he did mention that he's going to send some guidance out there because every district would be in the same boat. You know, if we have a bus that, you know, say, I can concede 72 students in the summer at full, and then now all of a sudden, you can only have, you know, 20 on it. I don't know where we would find the additional buses and the cost to that would be extraordinary. So there's a lot of work that'll need to be done there. We have to see some of the commissioner's guidance around that. We are looking at, you know, we have a school committee policy. We do transport within, you know, we transport possibly more students than we need to. We could go through the school committee policy, but we could also look to revamp the school committee policy and go by state guidelines for transportation if we have to. So there's a lot of moving parts. Lisa Farada, Transportation Coordinator, is actually looking at some of those situations and so forth as we speak. But until we get a little bit more guidance, and this is certainly not a Wilmington issue, it's a it's a state issue for any any school district that transports their students to and from school.
And one more thing that I want to add and kind of tying on a little bit with Mrs. Burns, Mrs. Newhouse. In general, with all these expenses and also as Mrs. Burns was saying with with PPE, that it seems that to get back into buildings that we're going to have, you know, all of the same types of cleaning and disinfecting and sanitizing protocols that, you know, are basically being implemented everywhere that is starting to to open up. And I think we really need as a district to commit to, you know, funding and providing that adequately. You know, most people know that teachers have a, you know, routinely reach into their own pockets to provide different types of classroom supplies for their students. But I, you know, I hate the thought of students of teachers having to, you know, bring in their own hand wipes and sanitizers to make sure that all the students in their classes are safe. And I really think that we need to have a district-wide commitment to make sure that we provide everything that is necessary to keep the classrooms in proper sanitary order.
Thank you, Mr. Raxdale. Any other comments before we move on? Thank you so much, Paul. Next, we have item 8C, which is the CME FY21 budget update.
Are you doing the personal report?
I'm sorry.
That's okay. And I'll just, if actually HC and HC personnel report and the CME collaborative. I'm sorry, AB and HC. Paul, do you would you wish to speak or could you speak to those?
Yeah. And the personnel report, what you had in front of you was just staff that have left in in with their replacements since really it's kind of pre closure, if you will. You will notice there's a couple of open positions and we made a conscious decision not to fill them. Right now, the right now, the plan is to fill them for the 2021 school year. They were both educational assistants, one at the middle school and one at the high school. So just an update of where we stand at the end, essentially at the end of the school year.
Thank you. No questions, comments? Okay. CME FY21.
Oh, I believe in your packet is a copy of the CME FY21 budget. This is informational purposes is part of the bylaws that this budget just has to be presented to each of the member, each of the districts that have wanted the CME Collaborative School Committee. It was voted and approved by the Board of Directors of the CME Collaborative. So it's really an informational piece for the school committee.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, that brings us to the 2020 to 2025 technology plan. Mr. Lord? You're on mute, Glenn.
Sorry. Thanks. So I'll just before turning over to Ken. You have this document obviously in your packet and Ken's and is going to speak to to speak to this in just a moment. This is an example of one of those things where there was a little bit of debate about whether or not we move forward with this to present this to you tonight. You know, in spirit of still trying to contend with everything, but at the same time, trying to move forward and to prepare for next school year. And this is, I can't think of another or better example of just that. As a district, when when I came into the district, we obviously were in a period of transition within the Technology Department. And that's for any school district, that's a that is a obviously a vital area to that's central to and supportive of teaching and learning. We spend, as most districts do, a considerable amount of time and energy and certainly budget around technological aspects to support the work that happens in classrooms. And as a district, we were drifting and have been drifting somewhat. In my opinion, without a solid plan that serves as a compass and a point of orientation around which to clarify where we're going. There are, you know, hundreds, thousands of pieces of equipment throughout our district and classrooms. And they represent a tremendous investment of resources amongst the town. And so to have a very clearly articulated plan as to where a district is to go, I think is essential. Ken came on board and immediately jumped into this work, recognizing that it was going to be critical for for a guide for his his team. And he threw the first part of this year, as I said, dug right in. And I'm so pleased to have this opportunity for him to be able to present to you tonight the WPS tech plan that will serve as the roadmap for us going forward over the next number of years, which will start with your hopeful approval almost immediately. So with all of that, Ken, thank you.
Thank you. Before I dive into the plan, I just wanted to take a moment to thank the members of our OAT department for all their hard work during the closure. Nathan Atwater, Megan Jones, Joe Pino, Dana Burnham, and Trish Kramer have all been just invaluable in providing support to staff, students, and parents throughout this closure and we're going really above and beyond and been incredible. So really thank them for all their hard work. The technology plan was the body of work. We formed a technology committee. The committee met several times and ended up doing a lot of work virtually. They did a lot of work on their own, researching other plans, looking at different things. They were very, very valuable. We had a great group of people. We had teachers. We had a couple of high school students. A really a great group of parents, all with strong technology backgrounds to help have some really valuable conversations during our meetings and provide awesome feedback while we formulated the tech plan itself. The tech plan, I broke up into four major sections. Infrastructure, hardware, software, and support services. Each of those having a brief description of various areas within those sections, as well as a list of action items that we came up with for things to address. And we came up with a with a timetable for those. In the addendum, you have a proposed changes to the capital plan for funding technology as well as copies of inventories and a survey that we did. And we do plan to repeat the survey in the fall. My original thought was to use the same exact survey. So it was very comparable. But given the COVID impact, I'm thinking of adding some more questions in there that certainly will be appropriate. So I'd really just open it up to questions. If you have, we can go through the action items, whatever the committee's pleasure is.
Thank you, Mr. Lord. Are there questions, comments, something you would like some more detail? Mr. Raxdale?
So in the professional development section, you discussed that most teachers don't feel that they have enough time to plan technology lessons and that we have, you know, this is an area in which we need to provide more training. And I believe the recommendation was to reduce the teaching load of ITS staff at the middle school and high school. And can you talk about what teaching load they're currently carrying? And what that would look like if it's reduced, then do does that coursework go away? Or do other people step into that? What is that going to potentially look like?
Sure. So at the elementary level, we have one instructional technology specialist that covers the six buildings and she has no teaching load. So she spends her entire day consulting with teachers, co-teaching, model teaching, bringing in new technology, running things like our Hour of Code and really collaborating with those teachers so they can integrate technology effectively into their curriculum. When we moved to the middle school, the middle school instructional technology specialist has almost a 0.8 load teaching. So she has very little time to spend with teachers during the day. She really only relegated to some work in that off period and then running courses through Wilmington University. So when that teacher, so she wants to bring forth a lesson, working with technology with with a teacher, she's only able to do that in spots when they're free periods. It's really hard to coordinate. Now, she runs classes in I'm blanking the name of it, but she has a class in technology that would either have to be rescheduled with other teachers move through other curriculum. So it's it's when I say to reduce their teaching load, both at the high school and middle school, it's not as simple as canceling classes. There's, of course, a direct schedule impact that has to be worked out because those seats would be lost in sections and would have to be, those kids have to go someplace. We also have to realign the lesson plans and curriculum that those students would take advantage of in those areas. Now, there's a side project that's really not mentioned in the technology plan, which is aligning our technology standards from the state to what we're doing in class and where all those technology standards fall. We started to do an inventory towards the midwinter and that kind of got derailed a little bit with everything that's going on. But that's the first step in identifying where we're addressing all the technology standards throughout the curriculum and finding homes for the things that either don't have a home now or perhaps are being addressed through the classes that the instructional technology specialist teaches directly. So finding that way to do that. The real thing, what I found in my career is that instructional technology specialists are the key to moving technology. Their extreme value is collaborating and coordinating with teachers, bringing in new technology, finding the customer to show that and being that coach available with the teacher to be able to move technology forward. You know, as as the high school teacher teaches between a 0.6 and a 0.8 load, depending upon the semester of her time in classes, she's available to impact that body of students, which she's very good at. But she could have a far greater impact across the entire student body if she were free from those classes to be able to work with them. So it's not going to be an overnight change. We do have to find places for the lessons and the things that they're teaching within other curricular areas through project work that already exists. We don't want to just say, okay, now you have to cover this material. We want it to be part of lessons and projects that they're already doing and embed it in there. So it's going to take a lot of work and to to move that. But I feel strongly that it's key to be able to provide the type of techno technology professional development and support that the teachers have. We still need to run those Wilmington University courses, those kind of one-off courses that a teacher takes and gets infused with lessons. You know, in a certain topic or a piece of software over a short period of time, but it really needs to be followed up with regular collaboration and coordination with an instructional technology specialist.
Okay, so so that sounds like you think that not just reduction, but that we should essentially eliminate their teaching load so that they can support other staff full time if possible, if we can get there.
Over my career, whenever I've had an instructional technology specialist that's had some other duty that's always taken away from their ability to support some teacher because their ability to support the teacher falls within that teacher's schedule. So if they have a schedule on their own that lays on top of that, it lays a conflict matrix on top of it. And it may take us several years to get to the point where they have no, and we may not be able to get there. It's a work in progress with with the two administrations as well as their curriculum. But that's where I've found where we've been able to move, you know, my prior districts I've worked with, we're able to move the needle on technology integration is through those technology integration specialists being free to collaborate and coordinate. In one district I worked at, the that they had duties and study halls and things like that, and that really tied them up and they couldn't couldn't do those things. We're able to free them for that and had a tremendous impact. The last district I was in, the two instructional technology specialized specialists that I had had no teaching duty and they had the freedom to work with everybody. And it was just it was really fabulous. And you could see and feel the move movement of technology.
Great. Thanks.
Thank you. Other questions, Mr. Smaha?
Hi, yeah, I was looking at the, well, first of all, I read.
Hi, yeah, I was looking at the, well, first of all, I read through a bunch of this report earlier, and this is really comprehensive and it's really exciting. So there's a lot of great work. The one area that I was sort of curious about is having the, the, the Google education, so like the G suite for education. In addition to having Office three sixty-five, don't those, aren't those two very similar things? And don't they sort of overlap? And it seems to me like it's, it's two similar products. Why would we need both, I guess?
Sure. So it would be my, and maybe I'd need to clarify that a little on the plan. We are a Google school, I would call us, except for our email system, which we're working on getting us there. So I would say that Google Classroom and all the Google tools are really the way to go. But we still have the need for Office product licensing. So the Office product licensing, instead of purchasing perpetual licenses, we should migrate that to Office three sixty-five so that teachers and staff who need access to those have online access to the latest versions and can take them home and do all that kind of thing. So that, so we will be moving those products through Office three sixty-five licensing, not moving it through maybe some of the other products that they have.
Okay, so that's just because there's some people have, have an absolute need for, for Office. So that's, this is a better way to get at it. Gotcha.
We have courses in the high school that utilize it directly, administrative needs. And frankly, some teachers don't want to use those products. So we need to also put those. Right now, we're on Office twenty thirteen with perpetual licensing. So to upgrade that is, is kind of a bit of a hitch to go through. Our email migration has been incredibly complex because we are an exchange mail system. And our phone system also is an exchange mail system as well, uses that same system. So we can't just abandon that and go to Gmail. We still need exchange around the phone system. And then licensing that through Office three sixty-five is incredibly complex and costly. So working, that's been a project for the whole year. We're still migrating mailboxes. Tonight, we did some, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. There are questions or comments? Mr. Raxton.
One more question, which is how much are we trying to align the high school technology experience with the middle school technology experience? So that when kids are moving from eighth grade to ninth grade, the, the skills and the tools that they've developed, especially since we're starting in grade six with our Chromebook program, are going to kind of translate relatively seamlessly into ninth grade and the high school technology.
Sure. So at the middle school, all students go through several technology-based courses. At the middle school level from sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, and those courses, for a large part, focus on Google Apps, integration and use and collaboration and all of that work. So they're, they're giving them the tools and the skills that they need at those grade levels so that your English, your math, your science, or social studies class at the high school can utilize those directly, as well as the middle school course. So they're laying that foundation through those classes taught by teachers like Carol Trulli and Katie Downer and Brett, Brenda Lamano. Those classes are really giving them the foundation and structure of knowledge to be able to use as a launching point to go off. And of course, the sixth grade is the first grade now. With the one-to-one that, that we finally have cut that down to sixth grade now. So they begin to learn to, you know, make sure they have the device, be responsible, they have a charge, all those things so that as they use that through the middle school and get to the high school, it's not a thing to do. It's just part of the everyday classwork.
Can I have a question? And looking at the survey data and being where we are now, I feel like some of it was, it was so clear that it was done before the COVID night, right? So it's not even relevant anymore, some of it. Because so many of our students now are completely relying on technology. So now it's not just our sixth graders, but our third graders are able to navigate or younger the Chromebook. So looking at this action plan, do you foresee any changes or modifications, knowing that we're kind of in a different space now than we were when some of this was designed?
Sure. So, you know, the switch over to remote learning, really, I wouldn't ever use the word seamless, but the teachers really jumped right in and took to it and were able to use the tools that they've been using in a much higher percentage than what they're using before. So where perhaps they were using some Google Apps, things not even relying totally. So right, right after we closed, it actually was the turning point for a new set of Wilmington University courses to be released. They do them in trimesters for the teachers. And so the three instructional technology specialists put out additional classes in Google Apps and Zoom and other, other products like that. I actually have a meeting next week with our instructional technology specialist. And our agenda is specifically to review how successful we were with those products, where we are, and do kind of a what-if, similar to the COVID plan of what if we're still doing remote learning in the fall? What additional professional development systems do we need to offer? What is working, what's not working, and try to develop a bit of a plan for the fall and some different contingency scenarios. So we are looking at that need. One need that, that really crops up more than anything is being able to support the parents who, particularly the lower elementary grades, are having to, you know, do the Zoom and the Google Classroom with the student to get them online and everything. And you know, I find my, my tech support staff is doing parent support now as well. We have, you know, a grandmother who is taking care of a child and they can't, you know, use the Chromebook to get them on the Zoom so they can see the lesson. You know, helping them as well. So, you know, we, I do see the need for additional professional development if we're going to continue to go that route. And also really reexamining the products that we're using. We made a quick in-stream change where students in grade four and five didn't have Gmail access. So we made that change very quickly. We made sure that Google Meet was accessible to everybody. But is Google Classroom the right thing at those very early grades? Should we be using some of the product like Seesaw or something else? So there's, there's lots of conversations going on with that.
Thank you. That's helpful. So there is a motion. Would someone like to read the motion? Anybody, anybody? Mr. Benelli?
I move to approve the Wilmington Public Schools twenty twenty to twenty twenty-five technology plan.
Is there a second? Mrs. Newhouse, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of approving? That is unanimous.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much for your, for your work and what I imagine will be continued work as we prepare for whatever things will look like in the fall, along with Christine Elliott. So.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next, we have item E, which is the Student Opportunity Act. Dr. Brandt, or is it Dr. Regan?
Dr. Regan's going to actually take this. So you remember way back when, when we used to go to school in person, you brought the SOA to the school committee for an initial read and it was supported. And then we went out to get it vetted by the public, which we have now done. Since that time, the deadline has been extended. And then sort of not talked about anymore at the department. There actually, while there is a deadline that was announced for May, the commissioner has said that he's actually not encouraging districts to apply at this point. I think it's just, we're not sure what the status of the funding is at the state level. So he knows the districts have done the work, but he's asking for basically to hold on. But I do think it's important because we'll be running out of regular meetings soon as we enter the summer. It doesn't hurt to have the school committee do the last step in the process, which would be to vote to support the plan. That way, we have the vote on record. And then if it becomes that they, if they open up the portal and we can simply upload it as planned. So that was our intention tonight. In your packet, there was a copy of the original plan that was brought to you several months ago and that was vetted by the public. And then just the recommended motion that's also in the packet to approve the plan tonight.
Thank you. Questions before we read the motion? Would someone like to read the motion? Mr. Raxton?
I move to approve the district's Student Opportunity Act Plan two thousand twenty through two thousand twenty-three school years to be submitted to the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education in accordance with MGL Chapter one thirty-two of the Acts of two thousand nineteen.
Thank you. There a second? Mr. Samaha, all in favor? That's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll keep you posted as the deadline comes and goes. We'll let you know.
Please do. All right. Moving on, we are, am I right here? I'm just trying to, we're at other reports. I see subcommittee reports. And I see superintendent evaluation subcommittee. So the superintendent evaluation subcommittee did meet. I think it was a week ago. So Joe and Jay, please chime in if you would like. We sent out, and they're in your packet, there is a memo outlining the process and also some due dates or some dates. So we are asking for your individual reports. Be emailed to Mrs. Dixie by June fifth. The subcommittee will prepare the final report the week of June eighth. And then we will be ready to present it, final present, presentation on, at our final meeting, June twenty-fourth. There were some other details that I listed below about how to go about this. There is an example, well, but last year's report is there for you to look at as a sample. And anyone on the subcommittee that's made up of Joe Newhouse, Jay Samaha, and myself are happy to answer questions or provide any guidance we can provide to you outside as you prepare your individual report. Are there any questions or comments? Okay. All right, Jay or Joe, did I miss anything? All right. Okay, fantastic. So to pull up my, that was it, wasn't it? No, well, not totally it. That was it for subcommittee reports. Any other subcommittee reports? Okay. We have item ten correspondence, Mrs. Burns?
None this evening.
Thank you. We have some future school committee dates. We have our June tenth regular session, school committee meeting, also by Zoom. We have June twenty-fourth, which will be our final meeting of the school year. And then just some dates to bring your attention to, June fifth. We have the scholarship awards remote ceremony. June seventh is the first graduation ceremony for our graduating seniors. Dr. Brand, are we going to that school committee or?
Yeah, yes, most certainly. I think it's because you are, as a committee, most, most welcome to, if you'd like. And I'll make sure that she forwards specific details.
Great, thank you. For our community and especially our families of seniors, there is a graduation, all the graduation events are listed on the website. And if you go right to the website, it's pretty easy to find all the different memos that have been sent regarding the senior events and graduation ceremony. Good, okay. And then just some things that I know people have done around town and that we talked, I know that the administrators talked a little bit about tonight. But I'm sure you've seen, at least on social media, the bouquets that are being created by designs by Don Flora Boutique. They are for senior families and it sounds as though they, they need only forty more. So every senior family has been adopted and will be given a bouquet on the weekend of graduation. And so they're looking for forty more anonymous donors. So if you are interested, please, please do that in the next couple of days. We know the art show is coming up. That link is also, right when you go to the website, you can click right on it. We, I think we probably all saw the posters at the tennis courts that were hung, I think, just on Tuesday. So please go by and take a look if you haven't already. They look beautiful. There are some congratulation signs in town. All of our school committee members do have their Wildcat flags behind them tonight. Thank you very, very much. And they are still available at Ace Hardware in case anyone would like to purchase some to display their appreciation and congratulations for the seniors and for all students in Wilmington. Just a quick thank you to WCTV for being kind of on top of all the different things that are going on. Every time I go to WCTV, I see a new talk of the town or something that's highlighting something for our, our students. And a lot of our students have actually been on some of those things. So thank you very much, WCTV. Obviously to our teachers. Our selectmen, last night, they actually honored the valedictorians from Wilmington High School and from Shoshine Tech, which was really exciting. So as Mr. Giriyo said earlier, the communication and the relationship between the town and the schools is always so strong. So we really do appreciate their, their support. And finally, to the school committee, who are some dedicated, thoughtful, and very, very wise committee members who have been working tirelessly behind the scenes during this very challenging time with an incredible leader and Roman House staff and all of the district leaders. So I don't know if you hear it enough, but I, and I hope we tell you, but we are so lucky to have such a strong committee. And when I say we, I don't mean me, but I mean the town is so lucky to have such a dedicated committee who puts in countless hours of their, of their time and energy and just thoughtfulness and making sure that we're doing the very best we can for, for students. So I think we've said thank you to everyone else tonight, but thank you to all of the members of the school committee. And I don't think I have anything else, but if anyone else has anything before we sign off, we have one final motion. Mrs. Newhouse?
I didn't say motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor? That is unanimous. Good night. See you very soon.
Thank you.